All right, good evening. Welcome to the Board Meeting for Pasco County Schools for Tuesday, November 19th. Be a good time to check, turn your cellphones on to silent, please. Our vision statement is that all of our students achieve success in college, career, and life. The thought for the evening will be given by Board Member Megan Harding.
So in light of Thanksgiving, I found this quote that I really liked. "When you are grateful for the things in your life, big and small, you always seem to find more things to be grateful about." That was John Gordon.
All right. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As for a roll call, please note that all members are present. Excuse me. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please, for the family of Denise Goodridge. She was a secretary at Wiregrass Ranch High School, and unfortunately, she passed away. So please, if you want to consider thinking about Denise and her family. Okay, thank you. And I have an announcement that this is my last meeting as chairman for this past year I've been, and Superintendent Browning is going to act as our chairman until our reorganization happens and is completed. So you get this.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members. It is now time to elect a chairman for the next year, so I will entertain any nominations for chair.
I nominate Colleen Bowden.
Second.
Been moved in second. And for Colleen, any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations for the chairman. Very ceremonious. We now need to elect a vice chairman. I will open nominations for the office of vice chairman.
I nominate Alan Altman.
All right, you've heard the nomination. Is there a second?
Up second.
Any other nominations?
Just don't look at his face.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Altman as vice chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Too late. One, you're in.
The ayes have it.
The ayes have it. All right. We are so ceremonious around here.
All right, you need to move chairs.
Oh, I like this one. All right, so you guys come here. Do you have your chair?
I'll go to my normal third.
That's right.
Are we just moving over one?
Do I have to move?
You're fine.
We are really bad at this, so just enjoy the entertainment right now.
Do you want me to move her up?
No, you're good.
I do not care. Whatever y'all want. Your seat's hot, too. Apparently wanting to take his chair.
So where do you want me? Next to me. Okay. I think they said, they told me numbers.
Semi-numerary order.
We can smile at Jeff. Alan? Alan? Look at Jeff. He's trying to take a picture. You're ruining my moment.
Wait, this is yours? Why don't you get your stuff in your pocket?
All right, Madam Chairman, here's your gavel. Meeting's yours.
Did you have a chance?
Yes.
I did.
Does anyone have any changes recommended?
I make a motion, we accept the appointment of committees as presented.
I just, can I ask something? There's the board of, the Career Education Board, last time that never ever met, so is that going to be meeting?
I am, yes. I am confident it will be meeting.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Brief reprieve.
Second, Ben.
We needed a second, right?
Yes, first by Mrs. Armstrong, or motion by Mrs. Armstrong, second by Ms. Crumley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I forgot, oh, aye.
Sorry.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Madam Chair, if I can interrupt for just a minute. There's a matter that didn't make it onto the committee assignment list, and I don't know if it does, or it's supposed to or not, but perhaps just informationally for the Board, one of the items that's typically, that happens and didn't make it to this agenda is that Chris Williams is designated as the Board's designee for the purposes of the county planning commission and also each of the municipality planning authorities. So I think that designation really has, it's never been revoked, it probably would be good unless and until revoked, but I wanted to bring it to the Board's attention because if you don't see a change, if the Board wants to change it now, it could be an appropriate time. If you don't, then it will stay in effect. But the minutes would at least reflect that the Board was okay with it.
Does anyone have anything?
No. I move to continue to have Chris Williams serve on the planning board.
Second.
Until...
You didn't even need him.
No, I think that's great. And the only other thing is I'm told that there were alternates that were designated by the planning commission, which were Richard Tonello and Elizabeth Kuhn, as alternates. Except if the motion is amended, then we're good.
Yeah, motion's amended per Mr. Alfonso's suggestion.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, motion carries, and you've got the, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we need to look at the meeting to set our meetings, in which there were two choices. Does anyone want to make a motion or have a discuss the two options? For our meeting dates. I can't talk first. There were two...
There was one that was scheduled for the nighttime, and then there was one...
And then there was one where we had some morning, some evening.
Yes, they, we...
The dates are the same, the times were different, like two different...
Madam Chairman, what we provided the Board is two sets of meeting schedules. We provided one with a traditional morning meeting, evening meeting, 9:30, 6:00, and then we provided a schedule with all 6:00 p.m. meetings. The, just as a point of information, of the 24 meetings that we've had this, this year, only eight of them were during the day. We actually had to move some of the morning meetings to the evening to accommodate budget and public hearings and those kind of things. So only one-third, one-third of the meetings were held in the morning. All the others were held at night. That's the only reason we provided that alternate schedule for you.
Well, I think, just my comment is, it seems to be more accessible to people at night, if they want to come to a board meeting, so there's consistency.
Unless they don't drive at night.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, just, some people work at night, so I don't know, you can make the argument, you need a variety of times to...
It's recorded now, too, though.
Do what?
I said it is recorded now, though.
But allow them opportunity to come to speak to us directly.
I think the combination of both works for citizens. I know the commission now is all during the day, and I think ours of doing both morning and evening meetings in the same month, most times provides more opportunity to be public. So I'd make the recommendation, the motion that we accept that.
I second that, because...
Okay. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second.
Well, I, I, I think, the reason I seconded it, I think it does give a chance for everybody to come, because people that might not drive at night or might work evenings, they would still have the opportunity to come before the Board, and just to say, oh, if you can't come in the evenings, you know, you don't have the opportunity to participate.
I was leaning toward moving them to evenings, just also because it's hard to plan anything for that day, because we don't know how long we're going to be here, and staff can't plan meetings or anything, because they don't know how long they're going to be here. And I thought more people would find it accessible at night, but I'm open to either, either way. You make a good point. Yeah. I want it to be accessible, that's the main thing.
I want people to have that opportunity to come speak to us, so.
Okay.
Good point.
Okay. All in, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion to approve the appointment of McLean Alfonso, P.A., as the school board attorney.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Armstrong made the motion, second by Mrs. Crumley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on October 29th, the closed session on October 29th, and the workshop on October 29th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Armstrong made the motion, second by Mr. Altman. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we need to open the public hearing on Florida Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this is to announce the public comment portion of the Florida Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Program. Notice that this public hearing was posted on the district website and in publications in compliance with Florida statute. Any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this particular matter should have already completed a speaker's request form that you can get from the Board Secretary as you walk in. Anyone who is here to speak will be called, we haven't received any cards on this matter, but if anybody had, we would call people to the podium to speak. You have three minutes to speak unless additional time is provided. Since we didn't receive, these are just general comments, right?
Yeah, but was there anyone here to speak on best and brightest?
Yes, so if no one, is there anyone who's present who wants to speak just to the best and brightest topic? This is a public hearing, so now would be the time to come forward. Let the record reflect that no one approaches the podium at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, so no vote is taken tonight on that. So next, we have special presentations by Mrs. Cobb.
Thank you, new Madam Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent, Mr. Alfonso. Tonight, we are going to recognize students in the Sixth Annual Pasco Clerk and Comptroller Constitution Essay Contest. A record 113 Pasco County fifth graders entered the Sixth Annual Pasco Clerk and Comptroller Constitution Essay Contest, making work tough for the three professional writer editors who judge the competition. But at last, three essays stood out. Here to present the 2019 winner and the two runners-up, all from traditional Pasco County school elementaries, is Clerk and Comptroller Nikki Alvarez-Souls.
Hi, good evening. I was going to say good morning, but that's not it. Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Board Attorney, parents, students. I see the Boy Scouts here, that's fantastic as well. I am so excited to be here. This is our sixth annual essay contest, as Ms. Cobb said, a record-breaking number of applicants, and the applicants come from all types of schools. It's for fifth graders, but it's not just our public schools, it's also private schools, charter schools, home schools. And the great majority, which I think you would be very proud to know this statistic, of the top writers came from our Pasco County public schools. So that's, you're doing a great job, right? Our teachers are doing a great job, and so it's been, it's been a fun experience. And I have the opportunity now to present to our top three essay contest winners, and I would like to bring up two of my special helpers to help me give out our trophies, which are my children. So can Lexi and Sorin come on up, please? So both of my kids, they go to Sanders. Yes. Both of my kids go to Sanders Memorial Elementary. We are very happy at the school, it's an amazing school, so we're very appreciative for, for the curriculum there and the teachers and everybody. So can you guys help, right? Okay, so we have a trophy and also a medal, so come over here. We're going to do third place first. So Sorin, can you hold the trophy? Okay, and Lexi, hold it proud. So we also have a gift card, too, for all of their work, because this was something they had to actually do a lot of research on, and the topic was, what is the importance of our constitution? And we feel that fifth grade is an important time to really dive into what is our founding document and why is it important to our society. So they did an amazing job, and I'm so glad I'm not on the judging panel to judge. So without further ado, let me bring up our third place winner. Alex Colonia? Colonia, that's correct. Stay up here. Alex is from Longleaf Elementary School, so great job, Alex, you did a great job on your essay. So our second place winner is Nathan Grob. Nathan could come up. Okay. And Nathan is from Oakstead. Congratulations. All right, so our first place winner is from Lake Myrtle, and, I shut the chair, woman. Ms. Bowden actually went to the school with me, and we gave a surprise to Taylor and her class when we had a cupcake party for her class to celebrate. So if Taylor Schallman could come up from Lake Myrtle. So if it would please the Board, do you mind if Taylor reads her essay contest? Or do you want me to read it for you? Either way, I don't want to put pressure on you, whatever you'd like. I'll read it, but it's so beautiful, and I think it deserves reading, if it's okay. Do we have time? Yes. All right. The Constitution. What is the Constitution? The Constitution is the document that describes how the government works. It was written in 1787 after the United States had won its freedom from Great Britain. It was created to make one government that would form unity and make it strong. The Constitution creates a strong national government. Before the Constitution was made, each of the 13 states had their own laws and even forms of money. This made it difficult to pay government workers or military troops. The Constitution made one currency that could be used throughout the nation regardless of which state people lived. It allowed the government to pay the army and even collect taxes for the nation. Each state had different laws and ways of handling arguments. The Constitution set up a branch of government that made all the laws, a branch that carried out those laws, and, most importantly, and I appreciate this, because this is the branch that I'm in, a judicial branch that settled fights over those, who's, over those laws, what those laws really meant. By creating one currency and a system for settling conflict, the country would become more unified. With more similarities amongst the people, more peace came to the nation. Lastly, certain protections were written into the Constitution to stop a government takeover from happening. The government was divided into three branches so that no one branch would have too much control. Each branch can check and balance the other branches to make sure the power they have is not too much. In addition, the national government still allowed states to have control, too. The Constitution of America is what makes the U.S. the United States. It is what our government was founded on. Without the Constitution, the country we live in would be much, would be a much different place. I am proud of the government that was created for us. Written by Taylor Schallman.
Could the families who are with the students stand, too, so we can recognize you? And the school administrators, there's some principals, there's some principals out there, thank you. Congratulations. If the students could come up and shake their hand. And Ms. Alvarez-Souls, thank you very much for doing this for our students.
Absolutely.
We appreciate you.
Thank you for being, me being part of this.
We need to stay for another picture, and we also want to recognize, because I believe Ms. Cobb's, thank you, we also want to recognize Boy Scouts from Land O' Lakes, Troop 707 are here. And if you would, we'd like to take pictures with both groups. If we could have a recess just for a minute, so we could take pictures with both groups, the constitutional essay winners and the Boy Scouts out in the hallway. Okay, so we're back in session, and we are moving on to agenda item number six, public comment. I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks. So, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I wanted to let the Board know that just a count of the cards that have been provided, we have, I think, about nine, maybe 10, that are on agenda items. There were a few that were submitted on the green forms that did not identify a topic, and since it's related to agenda items, we put those in for the non-agenda item topics. But that being said, the grand total was 39 cards, and I should mention that now because of the Board policy that says that there's a total of one hour that's set aside for public comment, and that's for both the before and after the meeting. So I just want to make the Board aware of that. At this point in time, we'll maybe see what happens when we get there. Other than that, ladies and gentlemen, this is the opportunity for the Board, or for members of the public, to make comments on matters appearing on the Board's agenda tonight. Copies of the agenda are available at the entrances of the boardroom. To speak at this time, you should have already completed a green speaker request card that you can find at the entrance of the Board or the Board Secretary. The form must indicate the specific item that you wish to speak to. Speakers will be directed to, I'm sorry, speakers wishing to address general matters that are not on tonight's agenda should complete the pink speaker card, and they'll have an opportunity to address the Board later in the evening. If you have any materials or documents that you wish to share with the Board, please provide them to the Board Secretary prior to making your remarks. Each speaker will have up to three minutes during this segment of the agenda. I will serve, actually, as a timekeeper, you'll see the timekeeping device on the base of the podium. Speakers will be called to come forward by the Board Chair. Prior to making your remarks, let me slow down here, please state your name and address
According to the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, you know, students who move schools tend to, uh, exhibit lower self-esteem and feel social defeat. And in a time where high school can be difficult for children, especially teens where they're filling their roots and trying to become adults, if you will, it's important for them to have confidence. There's a couple of other issues that I would hope that this board would address. Number two would be the traffic issue in Wesley Chapel in the mornings. It's horrendous. We currently have a very large road construction project going on, uh, which additional busing north from our community would create traffic nightmares, not only for commuters, but also the commute for the students. It's gonna put them on the buses longer, considering that Wiregrass Ranch is a much closer high school. Um, you know? And lastly, uh, unfortunately tonight, I don't think many other members of our community were able to be here, because the schools in our communities have events going on tonight. So unfortunately, you may not hear from very many people at Seven Oaks. So, if you would, or if you don't feel that, you know, we have convinced you, uh, I would ask that you table this issue until more of the community can be able to be present, or perhaps, you know, hold as an additional meeting.
Bless you.
So, other than that, you know, if, if you have intent to move forward, perhaps a phased rollout where students would be able to choice and get preference for the next four years could be, um, a happy medium for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Hannah Brannon, and then Albert Nasworthy, and Candace Kohler.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Brannon. I live at, uh, 3331 Grasklin Place in, uh, Seven Oaks Community. Um, again, I echo the, um, the thoughts of my previous speakers. I'm very concerned about the rezoning issue that's on the table tonight. Um, I have a high school freshman, my son, who goes to, uh, Wiregrass Ranch High School. He is, um, he's having difficulties already. Um, he's concerned about the, uh, moving forward to a new school next year if, if this, um, board goes forward with their intended vote tonight. Um, he's expressed to me that, you know, "Mom, I'm starting to get friends, I'm starting to build roots here, and now they want to move me again." So, um, I, I wanna see all the kids have a chance to build roots and, and stay where they're at. Um, I would ask that the board allow choice preference for all the children that are in, um, the high school now, to be able to be considered and allowed to stay, at least they wish. If even that means providing their own transportation, which we can understand, we can accommodate that, but, um, but just to force them to, to move to a new school is not in their best interest. Next, I'd all, I'd ask that, um, if the board does decide they're gonna, um, move our, our neighborhood to the, uh, Cypress Creek, Cypress Creek, that they, um, consider air conditioning in the buses, because that's a long commute in traffic. And with, with the, um, the weather was this year, I know that, it was hot, and it was very hot. For a long bus ride, it was, it would not be good for kids to be on a bus for as long periods of time with no air conditioning at all. I, I'm sure that you wouldn't want to be in, in your car for that long with no AC at all. Um, I'm also, again, like Mr. Lockwood said, I'm concerned that this, this board is going forward on a vote on a night where a lot of parents couldn't be here to comment, because they have events at their school. We're very involved in our schools. We're very involved with our kids. We like to be there for them. And to have to choose between our children and their events, and coming to a school for a meeting, and it's, it's, it's a tough situation again. So I would ask that this vote be tabled until we can actually have input from everyone in the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Albert Nasworthy, then Candace Kohler, and Oscar, Pastor Oscar Chac, Chacon?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm speaking to Item 2.5 on your agenda. I'm Albert Nasworthy. My address is 5314 Lookout Pass, Wesley Chapel, Florida. I'm the senior pastor of Myrtle Lake Baptist Church located in Lando Lakes. I'm here tonight representing our church, also Pastor John Cusper, and the exec, the executive director of the Pasco Baptist Association and its thirty-eight churches, along with members of the Tampa Bay Baptist Association, of which our church is a member in Pasco County. You've just renewed your agreement with Mr. Alonso as school board attorney. I would like to bring something to your attention. You've introduced a procedure that allows sexually confused boys and girls to share bathrooms and locker rooms, showers with students of the opposite sex without, in some cases, their parents' knowledge or consent. Mr. Alonso has said his advice to you to do is based upon protocols put out by the federal government. Mr. Kempel requested documentation that supports Mr. Alonso's claim about those being federal guidelines. After looking at the cases and the materials named by Mr. Alonso's response, Mr. Kempel spoke with the Liberty Council, whose attorneys are experts in this area of law. They remarked that in the case of the Resolution Agreement between the Arcadia Unified School District and the Civil Rights Offices of the United States Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Justice, there was no adjudication on the merits of the case that would attribute any federal authority based on this case. The court rejected the school district's motion for dismissal, and the school district then decided to settle the case in order to avoid any potential or further financial procedures. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Candace Kohler? Is Candace here? Okay, next is Oscar Chacon, followed by Claudine Judge, and Denise Nicholas.
Greetings to all the members of the board. My name is Pastor Oscar Chacon, uh, living 7113 Kendall Hill Way. And, um, I represent Apostolic Ministry Hospital Prayer International, and also the thirty-eight, uh, Baptist churches around the area. And, uh, you just renewed your agreement, Mr. Alonso, as a school board attorney. And I would like to bring something to your attention that might lead you to rethink that decision. You introduced a productive, and a, and a, a procedure that allows sexually confused boys and girls to share their bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with students of the opposite sex. Mr. Alonso has said, and he, he's advised to you to do that based on protocols to put out by the federal government. Mr. Kempel requested any documentation that supports Mr. Alonso's claim about there being federal guidelines. After looking at the cases and materials named by Mr. Alonso's response, Mr. Kempel spoke to Liberty Council, whose attorneys are experts in this area of law. They remarked that in the case of the Resolution Agreement between the Arcadia Unified School District and the Civil Rights Offices of the United States Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Justice, there was not adjudication on this merits of the case that could attribute any federal authority based on this case. This court rejected the school district's motion for dismissal and ordered the school district to pay attorney fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Claudine Judge, followed by Denise Nicholas, and Dick Maxwell.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Claudine Judge, 26909 Wingdome Drive, Wesley Chapel, Seven Oaks Residence, Resident. You'd think this'd get easier every time I'm coming up here, but it's not. Um, I've appreciated, I'm following up from, uh, we were here two weeks ago, also, um, pleading with the board, um, about this current rezoning, and, um, following up with that. We appreciated, um, what did we do? I should probably read my notes. Sorry. Mr. Williams, um, let me read. Um, "To reiterate, many residents are unable to attend tonight because of, um, we've got fall sports banquets at Wiregrass High School, first-grade musicals at Seven Oaks Elementary, band recital at JLMS, an opening night of high school basketball. Please don't, uh, I hope this doesn't translate into a lack of support from our community, because we are very involved and we are very concerned, uh, about the agenda. Although our family and neighbors are still vehemently against being rezoned out of our schools to a different community and neighborhood, we are grateful to Mr. Williams that he's proposed to include the rising juniors and seniors to stay at Wiregrass and complete their academic paths. And much like, uh, I'll piggyback on, um, Mr. Schulze's commentary to start, we would also implore you to please grandfather in the rising eighth graders and include the rising sophomores into this group and allow them the same opportunity. Our students have been going to school with these kids and upperclassmen nearly their entire school careers. The upperclassmen are their mentors. I know for a fact my son, as a freshman, has been playing sports with some of these boys and look up to them, and they're great students and great athletes. They should be allowed to see these well-forged relationships with these students and school administrators through. Please let them complete their academic paths. And as such, our current friendship, our current freshmen have already developed relationships, goals, and academic paths with their guidance counselors and teachers in order to prepare them for the highly competitive and rigorous college application process. Our rising sophomores will thrive with their peers and continue to rise to the level of acceptance and accomplishment in time for college inquiries at the beginning of their junior year, which is very close. When early admissions commenced, it is understood that the rising sophomores would have to find their own transportation if allowed to stay, and that is completely acceptable as a community." Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Denise Nicholas?
Can I come back as Denise Nicholas as proxy? I have a letter to read from her.
I, I can't do that.
You can't do that? Okay. Thank you.
Dick Maxwell, and then Terry Kempel.
If, if you'd like to submit her letter, that would be part of the record, but you can give it to the board secretary. That'll just become part of the materials that are part of the record for this.
My name is Dick Maxwell. I live at 4415 Spring Lake Court in Newport Ritchie. And regarding the appointment of Mr. Alfonso, uh, as attorney, um, you've introduced a procedure to allow sexually confused boys and girls to share bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with students of the opposite sex. The reason I'm bringing this up again and reiterating it is I would like to remind you that at a previous board meeting, Mr. Alfonso stated that this area was not his expertise in the law. And I just want to make a suggestion to you all. Perhaps contact Liberty Council, and they could recommend an attorney that who would be able to empower you to stand and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Terry Kempel?
My name is Terry Kempel. I live at 2312 Cherry Ridge Lane, Brandon, Florida. And I also, I'm here, you've just renewed your agreement with Mr. Alfonso as school board attorney. We've had people coming to these meetings for most of the year, and in that time, Mr. Alfonso has said that his reasoning for encouraging you to move forward with your procedure that makes it possible for sexually confused boys and girls to share bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with students of the opposite sex without the knowledge of any of those students' parents is based on protocols put out by the federal government. When Mr. Alfonso finally responded to my repeated requests for the documentation supporting his position, the response said, "There is no district record that is responsive to this request, notwithstanding support for the proposition that the district's procedures regarding student bathroom use was based upon federal authority includes, without limitation, the following materials and authority cited therein." I read the materials. I'm not an attorney, and it was clear to me that there, you've just heard four pastors, and there were six more who were signed up that didn't know they had to put 2.5 on the sheet. Ten items, and there are more, that could have been brought up that are incorrect. Now, I'm not trying to attack Mr. Alfonso. I'm just trying to let you know that you're relying on advice from an attorney who is not an expert in this area of law. In Georgia, recently, a five-year-old girl was sexually molested by an eleven-year-old boy who was allowed in the girl's bathroom because he said he was gender fluid. When that happens here in Pasco County, not only is the school district gonna be liable, but every one of you is gonna be personally responsible- schools to a different community and neighborhood, we are grateful to Mr. Williams that he's proposed to include the rising juniors and seniors to stay at Wiregrass and complete their academic paths. And much like, I'll piggyback on Mr. Schulze's commentary to start, we would also implore you to please grandfather in the rising eighth graders and include the rising sophomores into this group and allow them the same opportunity. Our students have been going to school with these kids and upperclassmen nearly their entire school careers. The upperclassmen are their mentors. I know for a fact my son as a freshman has been playing sports with some of these boys and look up to them, and they're great students and great athletes. They should be allowed to see these well-forged relationships with these students and school administrators through. Please let them complete their academic paths. And as such, our current friendship, our current freshmen have already developed relationships, goals, and academic paths with their guidance counselors and teachers in order to prepare them for the highly competitive and rigorous college application process. Our rising sophomores will thrive with their peers and continue to rise to the level of acceptance and accomplishment in time for college inquiries at the beginning of their junior year, which is very close, when early admissions commenced. It is understood that the rising sophomores would have to find their own transportation if allowed to stay, and that is completely acceptable as a community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Denise Nicholas?
Can I come back as Denise Nicholas as proxy? I have a letter to read from her.
I can't do that.
You can't do that? Okay, thank you.
Dick Maxwell and then Terry Kempel.
If you'd like to submit her letter, that would be part of the record, but you can give it to the board secretary. That'll just become part of the materials that are part of the record for this.
My name is Dick Maxwell. I live at 4415 Spring Lake Court in Newport Ritchie. And regarding the appointment of Mr. Alfonso as attorney, you've introduced a procedure to allow sexually confused boys and girls to share bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with students of the opposite sex. The reason I'm bringing this up again and reiterating it is I would like to remind you that at a previous board meeting, Mr. Alfonso stated that this area was not his expertise in the law. And I just want to make a suggestion to you all, perhaps contact Liberty Council and they could recommend an attorney that would be able to empower you to stand and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Terry Kempel?
My name is Terry Kempel. I live at 2312 Cherry Ridge Lane, Brandon, Florida. And I also, I'm here, you've just renewed your agreement with Mr. Alfonso as school board attorney. We've had people coming to these meetings for most of the year, and in that time, Mr. Alfonso has said that his reasoning for encouraging you to move forward with your procedure that makes it possible for sexually confused boys and girls to share bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers with students of the opposite sex without the knowledge of any of those students' parents is based on protocols put out by the federal government. When Mr. Alfonso finally responded to my repeated requests for the documentation supporting his position, the response said, "There is no district record that is responsive to this request, notwithstanding support for the proposition that the district's procedures regarding student bathroom use was based upon federal authority includes, without limitation, the following materials and authority cited therein." I read the materials. I'm not an attorney, and it was clear to me that there, you've just heard four pastors, and there were six more who were signed up that didn't know they had to put 2.5 on the sheet. Ten items, and there are more, that could have been brought up that are incorrect. Now, I'm not trying to attack Mr. Alfonso. I'm just trying to let you know that you're relying on advice from an attorney who is not an expert in this area of law. In Georgia, recently, a five-year-old girl was sexually molested by an 11-year-old boy who was allowed in the girl's bathroom because he said he was gender fluid. When that happens here in Pasco County, not only is the school district going to be liable, but every one of you is going to be personally responsible to your conscience.
Excuse me.
Without, when it happens, this is a bad policy. It leads, it leads only to bad conclusions. Like many in the room, I'm here from Hillsborough County, but there are people from other counties in addition to the people here from Pasco County. This is not an issue about Pasco County School District per se. This is an issue about our children and protecting our children, whatever county they live in. Protect Pasco County. That's the effort that we have going on here, and it will continue. The number of people who are coming to these meetings and are influenced and involved continues to grow, and it will continue to grow. This is not going away until you do something about this bad policy.
Thank you for your comments.
Do you want to close it? Do you want to close it?
No, that's it.
Okay. Is there anyone from USEP here to speak tonight?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Kaval? Wasn't sure who was here.
Second, say.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations on your election. President Peace couldn't be here because tonight is also our last meeting of our rep council for the year, and that's when we do the holiday social, so he asked if I would come and said, he wanted me to thank all of you and the staff and the chief negotiators for SRP and all of the teams for their really hard work in coming to a very successful conclusion last night. So we're very excited about that, and I look forward to an equally successful conclusion for our instructional one soon, and I just want to thank all of you and everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaval.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, now it's time for board member committee reports. Ms. Harding?
I have none.
I didn't have any committees meet.
Okay, just real quick, I've been, I'm on the FSBA Legislative Committee, and we've been having our, every two weeks we have a to-go meeting where we're discussing what's going on in Tallahassee and the federal government. Just a couple things to put on your radar and follow that was pointed out to us. Senate Bill 7012, 7012, it's a mental health bill, and that, they're kind of keeping their eye on that one because that might be one of the bigger bills that are going to morph into a lot of things being put into it. So I think we also be getting updates from, we are getting updates from Mr. Birch, and I don't know if he's seen that happening with that bill, and he's nodding yes. So that is, so Senate Bill 7012, keep a close eye on that one. Then as far as federal issues, there are several things that really could affect us. The federal budget, November 21st is kind of a deadline for a lot of different budget items that need to move, be extended for, pushed out, including the federal flood insurance policy and a lot of different things, but also there is some education funding that's going to expire November 21st. That needs to be moved forward, so hopefully they won't be too distracted to move all those issues down the road a bit. And then also Department of Agriculture, that does the SNAP program. I don't know if you're familiar with, it's a food program for families of low income. They are doing an overhaul of that, and the proposed overhaul will affect some of our free and reduced lunch programs, make it where some more families will have to fill out the complete application. So it's just going to be something we're going to have to keep an eye on and make sure that those families know what to do and we can keep them in the program. So that is, and it was pointed out that, you know, even though the government is saying that there's 4% abuse, we're saying 96% of the effective rate is really, really good for a federal program when you're looking at effectiveness. And then the other thing to keep on your radar, and I would really think you might want to address your legislators in Washington regarding this vaping. You know, there was a move, a bill to say that you couldn't use flavors, had to be tobacco-flavored. Idea was keeping minors, like our school students, our high school students, from having such ready access and reducing the advertising to them and reducing the, kind of the appeal instead of using just what was intended for, which was to get people off smoking. But I noticed in the paper this morning that the president is kind of backtracking on that, so I think that is something that we need to keep pushing for because we're seeing with that surveys, one out of four of our students are vaping. So it's, we don't want them to get addicted to tobacco and not even know that they're getting addicted to tobacco. That's all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, as you all know, I've been asked to serve on the Preferred Public Entities Insurance Trust Fund Board for the state and had a meeting last week in Orlando and can report that we're the largest district in that and that the fund is sound. They have come through the claims for Hurricane Michael and have been paid and actually increased surplus just a little bit, so our insurance provider is doing fine.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. I had no committee meetings. Superintendent Browning?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Gad?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Shibley?
There is an addendum to item 11.1 that has been uploaded into board docs for the board's consideration. As Ms. Kaval mentioned, I too would like to thank the collective bargaining teams associated with non-instructional negotiations. We were pleased to conclude that process last night. District HR and payroll teams have already begun working on tentative timelines to get that money into employee paychecks, and based on current projections, we anticipate being able to do that on January 24th with the retro pay coming on February 14th. So we're going to continue to work with those as being the timelines, but if anything changes, I will be sure to update the board. And lastly, HRAQ did hold another one of their targeted hiring events on Thursday of last week, and I do know that offers were made, so HR is continuing their efforts to offer more regular hiring events in the hopes that we capture some of those folks that are interested in becoming teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Shibley. Ms. Coon?
Nothing this evening.
Dr. Moore?
Nothing.
Ms. Swinson? Wow. Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, good evening. Since we last met, I wanted to make sure to say thank you for your support of our incredible Veterans Day celebration and learning here in Pasco County from our district event that many of you attended, to all the different schools that recognized and honored veterans in the community in amazing ways. It was a great opportunity for us to connect with our community and support that learning for our students. We also had a great Pasco Pathways Expo at River Ridge High School last night. Nearly 500 members of our community joined us to learn about the great opportunities that we have for students in that area. Don't forget about the East Side Expo this Thursday at Wesley Chapel, where of course more of our great educational options for families and students will be highlighted. Remember those windows, those choice windows for secondary is December 3rd through December 13th, and then elementary is January 21st through January 31st. I'll keep reminding you of that, as you know. And also, I think everybody knows, but it's definitely worth another public recognition to say congratulations and to highlight that Ms. Samantha Del Valle from the Office for Leading and Learning was, or is, the District Administrator of the Year, and Ms. Joanne Glenn from Pasco E-School is our Principal of the Year. Just worth another shout-out for those great leaders.
Thank you. Ms. Hexler-Nuttles?
Good evening. I will tag on to that and let you also recognize and give a shout-out to Mr. Josh Borders, the Assistant Principal of the Year, who was surprised at Stewart last week, Raymond B. Stewart Middle. And echoing the support of the pathways, thank you for attending, thank you to the schools for putting the event together with all of the department's support, and we look forward to seeing a strong turnout at Wesley Chapel on Thursday night. Last night's event was the inaugural kickoff for both Hudson Middle's Cambridge Program and Gulf Middle's Middle Years Program, and they both had very well-attended parent information sessions, so that's exciting for them. And I also just had the pleasure this evening of welcoming the Track Two of our LEED, Aspiring Leaders Program. Over in Building Two right now, we have over 100 non-instructional and instructional people who are aspiring to lead in our district in a variety of pathways, whether it be aspiring assistant principals or teacher leaders, clinical ed mentors over there being trained as well as for district leadership in the future, all being trained by current assistant principals and teacher leaders. So that's a really wonderful program to help grow our leadership capacity. And finally, share two holiday drives that our National Junior Honor Society students are putting together on the east side of the county. The John Long students are collecting teddy bears in their annual teddy bear roundup for the next month, started this week. And on the Trinity side, Seven Springs National Junior Honor Society is promoting a toy drive to help for their community as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Poe?
Yes. So I just wanted to, in the spirit of being grateful and thankful, to share with all of you that our elementary school leaders are participating in a Twitter challenge where they are going out and finding things on their campus and in their community and within their families and students to be grateful for. So they've been doing that the past couple of weeks. They have one more week, and every day they're charged with finding a different, around a different topic, from things that inspire them to showing somebody who produced great growth, true collaboration, but a lot of participation from our schools, and we're just celebrating everything good at our elementary school, so I encourage you to take a look at their Twitter pages.
They've been tagging you.
They do tag me.
Yeah, that's what I noticed.
There's a little competition going along with it, so it helps that I can keep track.
Yeah. Thank you. Dr. Eyle?
Lots of great things going on in the high school world, but I'm just going to highlight two things tonight. One is Schuetman Education Center, rather unique in that their interact club was actually recommended for an award, the Youth in Phila-, I'm going to say it wrong, Philanthropy Award, and they actually won it, and so that was very exciting for that school to get that recognition. Additionally, if you saw the information on Mitchell, we have a dissection going on with synthetic frogs tomorrow. I encourage you to come out and check that out. It is pretty cool.
Thank you. Dr. Skanga?
Well, and just to remind everybody, tomorrow is the Great American Teach-In, which is the day of the year that so many of our business leaders and community partners come into the school and talk with children, and it's just a, you know, it's a great occasion in terms of helping children think about all the possibilities out there in terms of career and future work. So it's a good day to visit schools if you get a chance.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have an expulsion recommendation hearing. We have a contested student expulsion hearing, and we're going to, have you discussed with the parents, or we're going to move that to after 17.3? Are they here?
Madam Chair, I haven't had a chance to go meet with the parents, and I didn't see them when I came in. Ms. Rockhill, are they present? If I defer to the board, if you want either to proceed with that at this point in time, I'll be happy to speak with them as we recess to clear the room. Otherwise, I'll wait for a more appropriate time to take a break and step out to see them. So you've not had a chance to speak with them?
I haven't, no, sir. I think they arrived after we started at 6:00, so I just haven't had a chance to break free.
I would like to suggest we wait till after 17, right after 17.3.
Very good.
Do we need a motion to move it?
I don't think so. Madam Chair, you can proceed, and what's next is the adoption of consent agenda, and if there's no issue with that, I'll go outside right now, speak to the parent, whoever they are, and at least get that prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to item number eight. Does anyone have anyone, anything they would like removed from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda with the addition of, from 11.1.
Second. Motion by Mr. Altman, second by Mrs. Crumley. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we are now moving on to action items. 16.1, I need a motion to approve. The rezoning recommendation for 2021.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the superintendent's recommendation for 16.1.
I'll second.
Okay, now discussion.
So I appreciate the people that came tonight, but this is a process that has been ongoing for months, and we had public hearings before, we had meetings in the community. I know that those of us as board members have met with dozens of parents and probably had hundreds of emails back and forth. I appreciate the superintendent's recommendation that he made at the last meeting to accommodate rising juniors, and I think based on the numbers and the projections, that was generous and accommodating. I've discussed with staff, looked at the numbers, then the counts by grade, the projections from the county for growth in the area, and quite frankly, I think that the work that's gone into it, the accommodations that have been recommended that are included in the current recommendation are appropriate. These are never easy and fun, and there's always somebody that could come up with a different opinion, but I think based on the months of work that's gone into it and all the many meetings and discussions and stuff, that the recommendation is the best that we could do, all things considered, looking at the whole entire picture, so I would support the recommendation.
Yeah, and this is always tough when we do a rezoning. It's not something we like to do and probably the thing we most hate to do, to be honest. But we are a growing county, and unfortunately, that gives us responsibility to make sure that our schools can accommodate the number of students that are moving into the areas. This rezoning has actually been going on for multiple years now, ever since we first decided to build Cypress Creek High School, and we knew the middle school was going to go beside it. We had such overcrowding at the middle school, we decided to move some middle school students to share space in that high school. So that's, has required us to actually do, you know, two rezonings for the Cypress Creek Middle School and for the Cypress Creek High School. So it's been a long, drawn-out process. I know it's painful. I appreciate the accommodation of the juniors, but you know, the idea is to reduce the number of students at Wiregrass, and so to accomplish that, it is necessary to move students out of Wiregrass sooner rather than later because we continue to be a county that's growing. I've met with some parents personally, talked to some on the phone, emails, talked to staff, looked at the numbers, looked at the numbers and looked at the maps two years ago when we did this before. So I feel like the recommendation that was made by the superintendent is the best that we can do at this time.
Anyone else?
Just that, just I'll echo everything that was already said. It is absolutely the worst part of this position, rezoning that is, and the numbers, it's the numbers, and it's this growing community, and we have, you know, I'm on the other side of the community, and we felt we just went through all this two years ago, and it's just very painful, and I wish there was a way that we could please everybody, so.
I'd like to echo that too, but I also wanted to add a little bit of my own thoughts. Last April and May, I got to visit Wiregrass Ranch High School with Mrs. Coon and Mr. Williams, and as I walked around the halls and visited the lunchroom, I was shocked to see how many students were forced to like eat lunch outside, they even had to create like an awning for them, and how crowded those halls were, and I was really taken back by the number of portables that we had on that campus. Wiregrass Ranch was built for about 1,600 students and- Wiregrass Ranch was built for about 1,600 students, and they're sitting well over that. I had, I have talked to Mr. Williams, I have been on the phone almost every day with Mrs. Kuhn, it feels like, to try to look at numbers and try to figure out a way that we can accommodate everyone. But 2,086 students for next year is a projection with rising seniors and juniors without any school choice being added to that, or the academies or sibling preference. And Mr. Williams had told me that 2,086 equates to 205 fewer students than this year. So, right now, there's approximately 138 students, or some, 138 sophomores living in Seven Oaks, and if we were to add that number back then, then we are in fact around the same number as this year, or slightly more. This is without adding in the siblings, like I mentioned, that would apply for school choice, or anyone in the academy that would apply for school choice. I know that in hindsight, because I was struggling with this, too, that 138 students might not seem like a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, it really is when you're thinking about classrooms and how much overcrowding there is. Furthermore, Mr. Williams and Mrs. Kuhn and Ms. White, the principal there, talked to me about the possibility of having to go to a 10-period day if they grew much more, and with feedback that I've heard from other parents that have actually done a 10-period day and from teachers, that was not a great option. So, I just, school choice is going to be something that's going to be vitally important if your child is a sibling or in an academy. Just make sure that you're applying for school choice, although we cannot guarantee your child be accepted, we do look at all of these things closely. While I am an advocate to face students, and I agree that high school is a pivotal turning point in a child's life, and that change isn't always easy, I also know that learning in an overcrowded school, as well as teaching in overcrowded classrooms, isn't always the best for our students either. With that being said, I am very thankful, Mr. Browning, for you allowing our rising juniors and seniors to finish out, and while I understand this is not the perfect scenario with a rapidly growing area, if we don't address these problems now, it's only going to get worse. Your child isn't a number to me, your child's important, and that's why I've been looking at numbers and data for the last month, asking and trying to figure out different ways to make this the perfect scenario. So, please know that these decisions aren't easy for me either, and it's not a decision that I'm making lightly. Making tough decisions is something I have to do sometimes, and unfortunately, this position requires me to make those tough decisions when there is no perfect answers. But with the increasing numbers, I feel that if leaving things as is, is only going to make it a bigger problem.
Thank you. I need to echo mostly what has already been said. It's not a decision that we made lightly. As a parent and an educator, I know how this impacts families. We've done our due diligence. Actually, you know, I've been following the numbers of Wiregrass for four years now, talking to families and driving the roads, and my biggest concern was the same one Mrs. Harding mentioned about the numbers of, I talked to Mr. Williams again, I've talked to him several times as well, again this week, and I looked at, you know, if we left one more grade there, what would happen, and we're just approaching that 10-period day, which is not good for students. We don't have, the school wasn't built for that many students. I realize that for some of you, the choice seems obvious, but when we look at the big picture and trying to balance across the schools, there's so many factors that we have to look at, and each lens gives a different view, and we have to really try to look at the big picture and make the best decision we can. We've, I looked back at my notes from when we sat here a few years ago, and we vowed during that last rezoning that we would do everything we could to get impact fees raised so we could open the new middle school in 2020, and we did do that. So, I'm proud that we did that. I know that along with that comes another rezoning, but we did get the school built faster than we first anticipated. We really, truly live in a great community, and we are fortunate that so many people care, and I know that there were a lot of parents at events tonight, because you are involved, parents. So, please don't think that we don't recognize that. We know that everyone is involved and cares. You know, again, we take our responsibilities seriously. I also want to reiterate another thing Mrs. Harding said about the controlled open enrollment or school choice, emphasize that, you know, students will be looked at on a case-by-case basis, and yes, there are preferences for the items list, the things listed, like the sibling preference, and also students completing the highest grade level. So, that includes, and not a lot of people mentioned it tonight, but I know I've heard from a lot of other parents at John Long, it's not promised, but that if you read our controlled open enrollment plan, there is preference given to students completing the highest grade level at their school. So, that would be the eighth grade, the students going into eighth grade at John Long next year. Preference is also given to students in the programs, depends on where they are in the program, so that includes any program that we won't have at Cypress Creek or won't have at the same level. So, depending on where they are in the program, so the people who are emailing about the higher levels in orchestra and AP capstone and the academies, so based on where they are in the program, they will be given preference as well. That was all I had to say. Does anyone else have anything to share? Okay, then, it's time to take a vote. All in favor of the superintendent's recommendation for 16.1, the rezoning? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, moving on to 16.2, the proclamation for the Great American Teach-In, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Altman, second by Ms. Harding. Any discussion?
Do you want to read it?
You can, do you have it?
Yeah, it's really short, so.
I didn't print it this time, so.
Do you guys mind if I read it?
No, please do.
Um, this is the proclamation recognizing the Great American Teach-In Day, whereas the Pasco County School Board recognizes November 20th, 2019, as Great American Teach-In Day, and whereas public education is the most important investment that communities can make in the future of our society, and whereas the Great American Teach-In connects schools to the community for a day when citizens can benefit from seeing firsthand the potential of today's students and the quality of our schools and educational programs, and whereas students can benefit from enthusiastic role models who share information about jobs and careers, an interesting hobby, or a personal experience, and whereas thousands of Pasco County residents now have the opportunity to return to the classroom, interact with students, and join the teaching experience. Now, therefore, the District School Board of Pasco County does proclaim November 20th, 2019, as Great American Teach-In Day.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto 16.3, school board member travel to the FSBA conference, I need a motion to approve.
Uh.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Crumley, second. By Ms. Armstrong. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, we're still going on until we get to seven, after the hearing, correct? Okay. So, individual board member reports. Mrs. Harding, please.
I got to visit a chief center at Ritchie. I didn't really know a lot about a chief center, so it was really awesome to go there and talk to Mr. Clayton and his staff. The relationship that they have built with their students there were so evident. I mean, there was kids saying, "Mr. Clayton, can we play football today? I earned all my points." Like, they were so excited. So, if you haven't been to visit, it will fill your cup. I also got to attend a beautiful ceremony for the, along with other board members, for the rededication of Land O' Lakes High School. The student government, music school theater, and culinary students did a fabulous job, and I wanted to thank them for the program and the wonderful tour. What a beautiful evening celebrating a wonderful end to a wonderful school project. This year, I got to attend my very first Veterans Day ceremony, and I got to, which was really cool for me, because normally, as a former teacher, we watched on the TV, so I got to see it in person, so it was an honor. I got to hear retired Wiregrass Ranch teacher and United States Army Veteran Sergeant Matt Simmons speak, and it was an honor to hear Philip Kapuska, Director of Future Operations at Pasco County Sheriff's Office and retired U.S. Navy SEAL, Navy Captain SEAL Team speak as well. So, I wanted to thank them both for their service to our country, and I wanted to thank Tina Starburst and her team for putting together such a wonderful ceremony and honoring our veterans. I also got to attend that same day Stryder Elementary Ceremony for veterans that their fifth graders put on. It was so touching, I didn't realize I needed to bring tissues, so I wanted to thank the fifth-grade teachers and students for allowing me to attend. I also just want to, I can't say enough amazing, amazing, amazing things about the social, emotional learning that we're doing within our district and the mental health trainings that we're offering our staff. I've been able to attend on early release days the SEL trainings at San Antonio Elementary, and they're just, I've heard so much positive feedback, and I've heard the staff say, like, what, what, how beneficial it is to them, and that's just so amazing to hear, because our students, you know, it's going to trickle, it's a trickle-down effect. And so, I just wanted to thank Student Services and everybody that was in charge of that, because it's just, it's really, really amazing, and it's making a really positive impact in our school system, so thank you.
That's it. Mrs. Crumley.
Yes. Also, attended the rededication of Land O' Lakes High School, got a great tour, fabulous food, and those students over there were just wonderful. They ran the whole show, and I once gone to Land O' Lakes High School, I got lost in the circular hallway, so it's pretty exciting now, because it's a whole-new layout. It's wonderful. I would like to thank Andy Dunn, he had volunteered his time last Friday night, and also the district had loaned some, their brand-new PA equipment for a candlelight vigil that was done for a 30-year-old Army veteran who had passed, and thanks to the district for all that you assisted, and it turned out to be a very beautiful event and evening, and a great honor for the veteran. Also, I'm very excited for the synthetic frog dissection. I will be going tomorrow, because my memories, I, one time I, makes me laugh now, I thought I was going to go into the medical field, and I'm not that person, and I remember dissecting animals, and it just made me sick, so I cannot wait to see this tomorrow, synthetic. Okay, on a serious note, I'm bringing up a subject for my, well, it is serious, but on another note, I'm bringing up a subject for my fellow board members, superintendent and district staff to possibly revisit. Last year's closing of schools and changes suggested by the staff did not sit well with me, and I had voted, as you know, against that. But with a year to watch, the continuing challenges on the west side and gathering of new information, and with much more, and with additional very serious reflection, I believe that some bold and decisive actions are warranted now. Our west-side schools need additional supports, innovation, new educational options now rather than later. I'm requesting that a workshop be held as soon as possible on this, if all or anyone here is interested. I've had some informative conversations with staff, and I'd like to see the bold and innovative approaches you have, and I know that you do, I've already been exposed to some, and I think it's imperative we give our students and parents additional choices in their education, and particularly address some very serious needs on the west side. I'd like to see heavy emphasis on early childhood learning, which is absolutely vital for this population and their academic success, and any, please include any kind of drawings, schematics, anything that you have that would apply, also programs that we can duplicate in other schools, I don't know, maybe a magnet program, any, anything that is customizable or tailorable to the students' needs, and I just, hopefully, this, to create new and exciting options for the families, even if consolidation might be necessary. Seamless learning from pre-K to K-12 would be optimal, with wraparound services for dental, medical, and behavioral situations. I know there are a number of community entities out there ready to take on this partnership. I have spoken to a few. The educational impact on the students' lives means we do this sooner rather than later, and I would also want to emphasize my gratitude to the principals and teachers on our west side and their schools, and their commitment to our students. They are an absolute imperative part of any conversation or any innovations we have here, so I want to ensure them of that, and that's all I have to say. So, is this a possibility of interest here?
Is there consensus here for another workshop to discuss?
I would love to see a workshop on this issue.
I agree. I need to. Superintendent, everyone?
Thank you.
Probably will not get to it before Christmas. We'll check the calendar.
I understand.
But if we can get it before Christmas, we will, if not, we'll get it right after we return.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, that's all. Thank you.
All right. I did many of the things that were already mentioned, but there's just one thing I did want to tell a little story about. I went to the Pasco Pathways and had so much fun talking to all the students that came from the different schools that represented all the different academies, different programs. You know, I had some terrific tomato soup from the Culinary Academy at Anclode High School, those students who were doing a fantastic job, just all the way down the road, the ROTC, all the other magnets. But one thing really stood out to me, I was helping a parent find the classroom, and he was just raving about the biomedical students, there was four of them, that were there from Wendell Corrin Technical School, and he said they were just amazing. You could just see in his eyes, he wanted his kid to be like those four kids. And I have to say, I was so impressed, too, because I did go by and also talk to them before that, so I knew exactly what he was talking about. All these kids had their future lined up, one was going to go organic chemistry, another one was going to go into medicine, another one wanted to go into genetics. It was just fascinating to see how excited they were about their high school and how they got up every day and couldn't wait to go to school. So, I think that is something to learn about choice, that you give students choice, then they really get engaged in their education. And the other thing I think is wonderful, it's a repeat but of improvement, what we've done before. This will definitely be something that will be changing our banner when we go out on recruitment trips, because we were named the 2019 Healthiest 100 Workplace in America. We moved up from 71, 71st position to 42nd position. So, our programs are working that we have with our wellness centers, all our initiatives that we have to keep our employees healthy, and it's being noticed out there, and it's definitely something that we need to tout to anybody wanting to come work in Pasco, the wonderful things that we do here.
Madam Chair, I've had several different things. I just want to focus on two real quick. The Veterans Day programs, Pasco High School did a breakfast, and as many of you know, I do the greeting team at my church, and several veterans that serve on that team, and they came to the breakfast, and when I got there, one of the students who I know came up to me and said, Mr. Altman says, "One of those veterans started crying over there," and come to find out, it was one of the guys that helps on my team, who I've known for 59 years, and he saw me and literally started crying again, and talked about how impressed he was with these young people, that they would organize the event, do the breakfast, were doing the cooking, and recognize them. So, it was just a tremendous event with, with just some really great conversation between those young people that are aspiring to other things, and those veterans who are in our community and been a part of it. And then, I also got to go to Raymond B. Stewart and be there with the superintendent and others when Mr. Borders was recognized as our AP of the Year, and another one of those families, that his wife is a teacher, his sister-in-law works for us, his mother-in-law works for us, his father-in-law works for us, and they're just ingrained in education and do a tremendous job, and Josh is just a wonderful young man, leading a great example in the schools that he's doing, and I was proud to see him recognized, and he's in my district, so I had to say it.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Newport Ritchie Rotary and the students at River Ridge High School, because they also participated in a Veterans Day program earlier in the month of November. Also, the Land O' Lakes High School rededication, and I just wanted to, again, give a thanks to Penny for Pasco Oversight Committee and the community, as well as the school-based staff and the students who handled that inconvenience with a positive attitude. Our teachers and students now have updated technology to enhance learning, and most importantly, the school is more secure. I attended the 2020-2021 Early Childhood Programs Recruitment Procedures and Selection Criteria Meeting last week. The committee is URSI, it's Eligibility Recruitment-- The committee is ERSI, it's Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection, Enrollment and Attendance. The committee, the committee's made up of early childhood partners, both in and outside of district staff. We reviewed the demographics, demographics of Pasco County and suggested revisions to the point system, because those selections are made, awarded on points to prioritize. We are looking into expanding into part of Hernando, because their centers aren't close to some of the families that are in need, and we have some in the Lakucha area that could serve some families in Hernando. I also attended the district Veterans Day celebration, thanks to Brian Corley and Tina Stavros and the students at Wesley Chapel High School and Watergrass Elementary. And as the clerk said, I joined her at Lake Myrtle to surprise Taylor, the winner of the essay contest, but then I also attended the Veterans Day barbecue at Veterans Elementary School. So it's been a privilege, because I've been able to go every year since they started it. And they invite relatives of students who are veterans and also open it up to the community. So they had quite a few veterans there, and it's nice to see the same people coming back every year. The veterans appreciate it, and it's very meaningful to the students. They also write thank you notes, and they make placemats and draw pictures for the veterans. So after the event, I gathered those and dropped them off at Baldomero Lopez State Nursing Home, Veterans Nursing Home, like we've done in the past, and they do appreciate getting all that from the students. I also went to Connerton Elementary and was pleased to see things running smoothly. I was able to join superintendent in surprising Joanne Glenn to recognize her as Principal of the Year, and I did want to also congratulate Samantha Del Valle and Josh Borders, and also the three teachers who are the finalists for Teachers of the Year. Jennifer Dixon at Gulf High School, Joel Santos Gonzalez at Gulf Middle School, and Patty Henley at Kren Technical High School. And I guess I will have to acknowledge it, they are all on the West Side. So I, I also wanted to ask the superintendent, I mentioned this last week, but I wanted to follow up, if we could get the dates on when these educators are going to be recognized with the programs and the dinners? Because I don't, I don't believe we've gotten those dates yet.
We just set the dates the day.
Oh, okay.
Those, those dates will be going before the end of the week.
Thank you. And then lastly, I visited Pine View Middle School and talks, to talk to civics classes about public office campaigns and the importance of voting. So that is it for me. Does any staff member have other business to discuss? Okay, Attorney Alfonso?
Just a few matters. First, congratulations, Madam Chair. Secondly, thank you for keeping me around for another year. And thirdly, I just wanted to report that I did have an opportunity to speak with the parent about the expulsion matter that's set, and they're ready to proceed. And one other thing, I was just tracking, as I'm supposed to do, the time that was spent for our earlier public comment. We have an hour that's reserved, twenty minutes was used, so there remain forty minutes of public comment time for, for the board personnel to your policy.
Okay, thank you. So now we need to clear the room for the expulsion hearing, correct?
That's correct.
I need